...up with it for the first few days trying to get everything figured out, but it was shut, it completely, it was like it was just shut right down.
Helped the hotels.
But, you know, they tout how it helped the whole community and not everybody.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's just three o'clock. We already did the pledge of allegiance. Roll call.
Mr. Ball absent, Mr. Behrens.
Here.
Mr. Christiansen absent, Mr. Johnson.
Hmm.
Ms. Lautner.
She's on her way, she just texted me.
Uh, Mr. Noonan?
Here.
Mr. Popa absent, Mr. Travis?
Here.
Mr. Wessel?
Here.
Mr. Yeomans?
Here.
Okay, uh, public comment. Steve Steyer's here, making some comments about the barn at Miles Kimberly.
Steve Steyer, um, I live in Empire Township, representing the Leland County Historic Preservation Society. We have at least, um, roughly two acres surrounding the Ford Farm Barn. Um, I wanna talk to you about, let you know about one of the projects that we just completed and another one that's coming up. Uh, first of all, we just got electrical power put into the barn. We hooked up at the power board at the northwest corner of the old buildings there. We tied in there and then went underground over to the northeast corner. And we have a hundred amp panel in the basement there. We want just two short circuits, just so we can have our equipment running there. So that's been drawn up. So we got that completed. The other thing is sometime this fall, we hope to do some landscaping on the grounds. And you can see on the, on the map that I've given you, there's a high spot right here between Gold Spring Road and our area and another one, a couple ridges over in here. And what we'd like to do is even this all out and take these high spots and move them down into the area that's, that's low, right, to the west side of the barn along the south side. It's all been over the way along the south side of the barn and then there's a little area in here. Um, the reason that I'd like to talk to you about this is because this area right here, um, will probably get back into the outside of our lease park. We really wanna do this because we've been bringing visitors in off from Gold Spring Road. This is really rough and bumpy and through that area, we'd like to level that out so it'll be easier drive coming in. We're hoping to get it done this fall so we can get it reseeded and ready to go for next year. Just wanted to let you know that and see if you had any questions or comments.
As long as you're going to reseed it, I don't have a problem with it.
I was gonna ask you, are you gonna reseed all this by the barn too? Just, you're gonna make it all nice?
Oh, yeah. It's all good. Uh, eventually.
I know it's eroded away, but I know it's, has eroded away.
Yeah, it is. What we might do is have a gravel drive for maybe twenty feet coming in off of the road because that's where everybody drives over. And then the rest, everything else would be back to grass again.
Sounds good.
I don't see a problem with that.
Well, we'd like to come in and let you know.
No, I think that's a.
We've been working away at it and, um, we thank you for all your cooperation. Is it a good year of gardening? Yes, yep. Uh, they're ready to start packing it in for the fall, I think. This year, the new thing was we had flowers out on the edge.
Yeah, they looked, it looked really nice.
Any questions?
I've got a question, but I won't take our time here. Let me have your phone number.
Okay.
And I'll call you.
All right. Five one seven six four eight.
Okay, do we have any agenda additions or deletions? Um, I'm gonna take off the barn update because that's.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
And, um.
I left that kayak or boating thing, just in the chance they ditched it.
Yeah, and I told them to come back and sounded like they were, but they, I haven't heard from them, so I'll leave it there just in case they show up. And.
Steve?
Is this yours?
That's all that I.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, anybody else? I'm marching to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Support? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We have an agenda. Okay, moving on to action items. Got old centers park, but, uh, one A, tennis courts. Um, I kinda gave you guys the gist of it or what happened, but, um, Chet called me last week and said that he had heard from John Hoover and, um, or that Chet had contacted John and wanted to know where they stood on the tennis courts and John called him back and said he was very surprised to hear from him because he was told that, that county wasn't, was no longer interested in doing it. Um, but Chet said that that, didn't know where that came from and that no, would still be interested and John was quite happy because he said that they were starting to explore where they would put them on the school campus, which would involve a massive amount of excavation, no matter where they put it unless they use that, um, football field, the practice field. So, he was excited about it. Um, Chet said that he was gonna make an appointment to meet with them and let me know when that is. I haven't heard from him, but, um, probably be next weekend, I guess. So, let me look and see where it's, where it's going, but it sounded like they were still quite interested. Go from there.
And that's fifty year lease, right?
That would be, yeah. It has to, has to be.
Probably, doesn't have to be for us.
Correct. Okay, no more. Uh, Ty, could you give us just a brief run-through on that?
Yeah, we, uh, talked about the half-time position and, and knew that that was always gonna be a problem because people would take a position and continue to look for a full-time job. And, uh, so where we ended up is Chet is exploring contracting out with D and W for some of the work that our internal staff does in this building, freeing up a part of a person here, Duane, to work summers in the park with, with Scott. So that we wouldn't get the half position, but we get a part of Duane's time and that be replaced by a, by a contract with D and W to do what, throughout the years, the maintenance work in the building. It's not formalized yet, but that's the plan and, and I think Chet thinks that can happen.
D and W mechanical?
Yeah. They currently are on a contract with us to do all of our extract stuff and so they will just agree some of what Jerry does. So nothing, nothing official, but that's where we are.
I'm gonna skip over the rowing club.
The, the, so this position, this would be starting next spring?
Well, I, I don't know how quickly. It would be in next year's budget, so it would be whenever Scott needed somebody. If, if we work out this deal, if we don't work out the deal, then we're back to, I think, the half-time position.
Yeah. Quarter. Five hundred dollars. That's a quarter.
Half a quarter. That's, that's.
We don't have, uh, financials because Scott is not here, which sounds like some of the guys didn't know about it. Yeah, he was working at Miles Kimberly, moving some trees or brush or something and all of a sudden he woke up and had been knocked out. Uh, he doesn't know exactly what happened, but a limb, some tree, something fell on him, hit him. He didn't know where he was at. He called nine one one and they were able to trace GPS track his phone to find out where he was at. And they got him and, um, he has a broken wrist and he has some numbness on his left side, but the doctors are confident that that will go away. It's just kinda like a stinger type injury. He's frustrated with not being able to work. Sounds like he's gonna be out for nine weeks, which we're a couple weeks into the, three weeks into it probably now.
Looking at November.
Yeah, November return, which, uh, Jerry Coleman and Duane have been taking care of the parks in terms of what was laid out. He's in good spirits, I talked to him last week, but, uh, just bored. Moving on to committee reports, Veronica Valley.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, so I guess I should, I can make the motion and we'll discuss it at that point. Because this is kind of a done deal and I'll give you the backstory in a moment, but here's the motion. I move that the Parks and Rec Commission agreed to co-sponsor, along with the Invasive Species Network of Northwest Michigan, a workshop demonstrating best practices in the removal and control of autumn olive. Workshop date is tomorrow. Nine nineteen, from five to seven. This.
Do we have a second on it? Or?
Okay. Backstory. Our committee voted to, uh, recommend to this group, um, that we, that we co-sponsor this, uh, workshop, but last June, I think. But then the workshop disappeared from ISN's schedule and they just, the last I heard, up to even through our last full commission meeting, they weren't gonna do it. I found out through our conservation history. They don't know they were gonna do it and they had it all scheduled for the nineteenth of this month. Um, they have, as of three days ago, they have eighteen people signed up to come and, and watch. It's a demonstration of these best practices. The public simply watches, they don't participate in doing any of it. Uh, it's all checked out with, with, uh, Chet as far as, this isn't really a group activity, we are a co-sponsor. The only thing we're doing as sponsorship is providing the land. But the, the group coming in, the, the public coming in to watch these, this demonstration of what's basically cut and paint, cut the autumn olive and paint it with herbicide. Questions? I mean, this all.
So they're just gonna take care of some of our, of our autumn olive?
Yeah, some of our autumn olive. Originally, way last spring, my hope was they were gonna take care of a lot more of it, a larger chunk of it. I, I don't, I don't know, I won't know until it happens tomorrow.
I'll go next. You gotta be there and just keep asking questions about how they remove.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there. We're gonna. Yeah. I, I am gonna be there. We're going to work in the front, kinda one acre corner, I, I think it's northwest corner, where we did plant a bunch of, of trees in the spring. I'm not sure how well those are, particular trees are doing, but, um, we're all set in terms of any legalities. That was my big concern when I, I heard right after, I think it was the day after our last meeting. Oh, no, they got this whole thing planned, they've got a publicity going, blah, blah, blah. But Chet pointed out, no, we, we would be then considered a co-sponsor.
Did they have it in the paper or anything?
They've publicized it through their network.
Oh, okay.
There was, certainly could have been some publicity that I could have driven from our side, but I haven't done any of that, the rest of this. There's enough time to consume.
Is this down to some of the collaboration you need to document?
No, no, I'll get into that next. Right now, it's just a motion to approve that we are, we agree to be co-sponsors for an event that's gonna happen.
Okay, all those in favor?
Tomorrow.
I'm so sorry. I was exactly twenty minutes. I thought it would be, what are we voting on if I may vote, otherwise I can pass this vote?
Just pass it.
Okay, sure.
No, don't, you don't have to vote, just pass it.
But you're guys lying about you, right?
No, I have you seated at three twenty, so Dave, why don't you read back your motion to me?
I move that the Parks and Rec Commission agreed to co-sponsor, along with the Invasive Species Network of Northwest Michigan, a workshop demonstrating best practices in the removal and control of autumn olive. Now, the workshop is scheduled for tomorrow. All of this unfolded on me after our last month's meeting. I did clarify with Chet that there's no issues because we are co-sponsored. We don't have to go through the other paperwork and all of that, that sort of thing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
So it's the public coming to public land to watch, kind of give her invasive species?
That's correct. That's correct.
I think that's what you call the Veronica Valley?
That's the Veronica Valley.
Crazy.
And I didn't think there would be a whole lot of questions about it, but I did go through checking it all out, so we're, we're good to go.
Over and above. Thank you.
Now, next thing, uh, well, let me, let me jump to A one, Leland St. Mary Cross Country team discussion. Is this relative to their request?
For concession?
Okay, it is. Did they ever contact you back about it?
Yes.
Okay, what did they, so as far as, you guys have to agree whether or not to allow it?
And the, the request is that the school itself, Lake, Lake Leland St. Mary, have a concession stand where they give away the pop, the candy bar chips. This is at the cross-country event. They have their own, they're doing this for PR, not to make money. They will have a free will donation bucket to support the event.
Is it a multi-team event?
Multi-team event.
The one they always do?
Yes. And the school, so this is not the cross-country team itself doing this, this is, at least the request has come from the school administration.
As long as they're not selling it and it's all free will, no problem.
And I, my response to them was it needed to be advertised as free will. Donation.
Yeah, not a suggested donation.
Yeah.
Or just free, free will. They just kinda do it from like a pack of a truck or a wagon trailer?
That I don't know. That I don't know exactly how they're, how they're gonna do that. And I pretty much have said that, given them the go-ahead, pending anything that comes up today, but we have that precedent with, uh, both Kids Fishing Day, they have a free will donation bucket and the concerts had, at, at Old Centers. So it's good to go as long as there's no issue based here. Okay. Next thing, it became clear to me at this year's Kids Fishing Day that the biggest need, uh, and really need for us to support Kids Fishing Day is to help take care of the weeds. The weed growth in the ponds is, it really was, I think, unacceptable for this year's Fishing Day. There were very few complaints, according to those that were there all day and worked at the event. Very few complaints about the weeds, but just watching, so much weediness on the surface, it was very difficult to, to, you know, get a worm in. Well, I've learned what, the weeds have been cut twice a year and I didn't know about the fall cutting until yesterday. But this gentleman has cut the weeds twice a year by putting a boat in the water, using a hedge trimmer on an extended shaft. He leans over the front of the boat while somebody else rows the boat, or this year for the first time, he said he put a three-horse motor on the back of the boat and they just drive parallel pathways through the pond, cutting the weeds. He then allows, and it's about two feet deep. He then allows natural wind to just blow these cut weeds to one shore or the other. And in the past, he's had sometimes Boy Scouts, sometimes a couple of other people that he's just out, pulled together to rake them up out of the edge of the pond once the winds blew. This gentleman has indicated that he would be willing to do it again next spring. He really doesn't care if he gives it up, however. He's done it for fifteen years. This has been under the table and it, it's coming out now and that's why I think his doing is gonna come to an end. We own the ponds, one of our priorities in, in the, the previous five-year plan was supporting Kids Fishing Day. We've gotta take some responsibility and do something about, about the weeds.
Have a question. When I was in Kentucky, I had a really large pond, a couple acres. And we would pour, I can't remember the name of it, but it was blue, it was like a blue concentrate. And it reflects the, it keeps your pond beautiful blue color for one and clear, but it reflects the sun so vegetation doesn't grow as much. And my crappies and catfish and everything else lived in with that and stuck in. It was, you know, once a year, once a year application. Sorry?
Copper sulfur.
Copper?
Copper, yeah.
I think that's probably what it was.
Right, Heather does not approve of that.
Huh? Heather Hedinger didn't approve of that.
Who?
Heather Hedinger, head of the DNR that comes and meets with us every year for Kids Fishing Day. It's not hers. I didn't say it was, but.
Well, I'm just.
Could we explore that idea?
Well, she, pardon me?
Could we explore that idea?
Well, yes, and I've, that's, Heather and I talked about it at Fishing Day, um, and I said, are we getting to the point where we're gonna need chemistry? And she acknowledged that we might be at that point. Now, Lonnie Roddymaker is slowly taking over from Pete Taylor, who's the head of the Kids Fishing Day Committee. He and I are talking together, he's very aware of our need for a, a piece of paperwork, a memorandum of understanding or some such, that demonstrates, proves a collaborative partnership. Uh, this is for this, for the grant application. If we could get the right collaboration demonstrated on paper, documented on paper, it's possible we can get a full thirty points, which really starts getting us up into the range right there by itself of, of better consideration, better possibilities. The problem with the tribal work, I've, I've sent in the third draft of a memorandum of understanding for collaboration with the tribe. The problem is, when I pushed all that at the beginning, it was because the tribe was saying their fire department would be willing to commit to supporting the watering of trees that we planted. Well, it turned out their fire department doesn't wanna do any such thing. So this memorandum of understanding doesn't really commit the other party besides the county.
They're trying to commit a third party. They're trying to commit a third party.
What the state wants is to, is for the county to collaborate and have an agreement on paper with another group, a governmental agency or a nonprofit.
Right.
Showing what they are going to do to help guarantee the success of the plan. The, the, uh, prairie development and the, the contract the county has with Fish and Wildlife, it doesn't specify that Fish and Wildlife is gonna do anything except be a consultant. They want, the state wants to see almost a maintenance agreement.
They wanna see hands-on.
They wanna see hands-on. I thought we were gonna get it with the tribe. Then I began looking at weed control and thinking, well, this is much more of a natural because Lonnie was all about and is still very, gonna be very supportive of this, organizing the volunteer group, volunteers from the fishing committee to rake leaves, maybe to get involved in, wait, rake weeds, maybe get involved in, in cutting weeds. But immediately the problem there became, the Kids Fishing Day Committee is a subcommittee of the Lake Leland, Lake Association. The Lake Association is not likely to wanna get into a firm agreement that they have some responsibility for managing the weeds in somebody else's pond, our pond. And a collaborative agreement just with the Kids Fishing Committee, Klaus has agreed, the state probably won't see as being worth a whole lot of points. Two days ago, Klaus raised the possibility, the question with me, have we talked to Bingham Township? Is there anything we can develop as a collaboration with Bingham Township? I don't know. I don't have a strong idea what the possible collaboration would be, but I'm meeting with Midge Warner tomorrow to raise that question with her, just to see, can we generate any interest on the township's part of coming to some agreement as well, so we can come up with something. That's pretty much my report. I, I, I do, one, one final thing. Bill Watson, it's not AmeriCorps, I, I don't quite know, uh, he's working under Child and Family Services, um, but he's been running these work crews, work crews like AmeriCorps crews. He called me and said that he had found some separate financial support for one of his crews to do work exclusively in Veronica, in Leland County. And he was thinking of a day or two of invasive species mitigation at Veronica at the end of this month. I haven't heard from him in a week. As far as I know, he's still in the U.P. with the crews working on the projects up there. If, if, I guess my question is, if I find out that, yes, there's no cost to us for, for the crew, he has, they have the licenses for application, he would, would ask us to pay for, uh, the herbicide, but it's really pretty lit, little, pretty small amount if you're cutting, talking, uh, cutting, cutting and paste, cutting and painting. You're not talking about a great quantity. If, if he gets back to me now, between now and I'm not here in October for this, the October meeting, but let's say in the next couple of weeks, I do hear from Bill and yes, all of these possibilities come together, do we have, what kind of official work agreements, things do we, do we have to do here at committee before I can say, yes, let's get it done? Cause fall's a good time to do cut and paint. And if we have an opportunity to make use of his manpower, I'd like to do it, but I'd wanna get hung up on having to wait another whole month to get approval. Is there any room that I?
I'd, I'd, I wouldn't be, I have a problem with it as long as they put a cost not to exceed, not on the herbicide. I don't know, are you talking like Tordau, Blue Brush Killer, something like that?
I guess I'll learn some more tomorrow with the workshop.
It's not overly expensive, but there's definitely a cost there. Quarters.
Kay, Kay Charter says it's Roundup that you use for that.
Yeah, you can call that number on TV.
Yeah, that's right.
I, I just, what I, I guess, I don't know how to proceed if Bill does get back to me. I asked him to get back to me before today, but I know, there's been a problem before because he can be off distant and.
But there's time to be donated, it would just be part of the herbicide?
The herbicide, yeah. What, a couple hundred bucks, Casey, what do you think?
Yeah.
A couple hundred bucks? Yeah.
Couldn't we even spend that much in a day's work?
No, probably not, but it depends how many guys.
That'll cover you just in case.
It depends where you're buying the chemical, I mean, generic Roundup that he buys is extremely cheap, but if you're going to.
If you're gonna buy the good stuff.
Scott has indicated the weed.
My truck.
I would use trucks better than, you know, but.
Scott has indicated to me before, I haven't talked to him about this specifically, but we already own a bunch of, I mean, he has stocks.
Oh, sure.
Some, some.
Should we have a view?
I would just make a motion that it's fine as long as a cost not to exceed two hundred dollars, something like that.
So the motion would be that we approve.
Volunteer help.
Volunteer help from the Bill Watson Child and Family Services crew for invasive species mitigation.
Child and Family Service, seats?
No.
Seats? Different seats? Okay.
Oh, he left seats. He left.
This is called Youth Corps or something like that. It is a, they got a similar thing to seats.
Sure, sounds like it. Okay.
Somewhere at the end of that sentence with a cost not to exceed.
In herbicide. Two hundred dollars in herbicide.
Two hundred dollars in herbicide.
Might just make it five hundred just to answer.
That would be a lot, two hundred would be a lot. It would be a cross.
Yeah.
Maybe make it three hundred. It's not to exceed, which means, but if it's two hundred, you're still.
Not to exceed three hundred. Court?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I want to answer Melinda's question because I, you may have missed this very first part. Now, Bill told me that he had another group, I don't know who, a church group maybe, came to him, said they would support, that is, the salary, the wages of, one of his crews is, uh, just post-high school age kids who are not officially in AmeriCorps, um, they're here through, maybe some, they, they may be on that crew as some of his previous ones were, through court assignment, through counseling work with Child and Family Services, not sure exactly how that's made up, but he has one crew that would be able. Not sure exactly how that's made up, but he has one crew that would be available for this other volunteer group to support the, the cost, the wages. That was my.
For Leland County.
For Leland County only. Now, that, that's my, was my question that I started chasing him on last week. Are you really telling me this crew's going to be free to us? Because then I knew herbicide's not going to be a big deal.
But this makes sense now, why? That's what it is.
But if it comes through that he says, yes, I can get this, I want to be able to move and say yes to it.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we think we're good to go.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a couple other questions. Back up, is this milfoil in the ponds you're trying to get rid of?
I suspect there's milfoil and.
Maybe some other stuff.
And another one, yeah.
Eurasian milfoil.
Eurasian milfoil.
And I, I, as said during your comments, to explore the blue stuff because there's another thing that's not a chemical that, well, maybe it's a chemical, but it's going to be in our approved, that does turn the water blue. And it might be for that purpose. And the only reason I know is because I have a pond upstream from my property and a couple summers ago, the pond was just running blue and I was alarmed, so we, we took a water sample and took it to the D N R and they're like, oh, that's whatever and it's harmless. But it had been in the guy's pond upstream.
It must be.
It was overflowing, but it was just the prettiest blue I've ever seen, but it alarmed me. And he's like, oh, there's, but it might be, there might be a safe blue that would help us.
And all of that I'm continuing to explore. Both Lonnie and I have reached out to Heather Hedinger and said, we need your voice involved here. Lonnie has also contacted a consulting, well, they actually do more than consulting, but a firm in Lansing that professionally manages ponds. They don't generally work this far north, but they have done, according to Lonnie, two or three jobs up here, Bay Harbor in Petoskey. And they would do a one, one shot, come look at the pond, make recommendations, tell us specifics in the recommendations.
It sounds to me like it's been cut off so many years, just like a field, you cut it, more grows.
It gets thicker over time.
More grows.
The thing, the thing that I learned.
You need to take off the source of it, the only which is the sum.
Yeah. And adding to that point, it's been always cut again in the fall and those, all those weeds taken out, so they weren't there rotting and soaking up oxygen all through the winter. I don't think that's going to happen for us this year.
Right.
So we're going to have an extra problem with oxygen depleted waters, et cetera, in the spring. So I'm, I'm thinking we're looking at some sort of one-time shot to knock it all down. I don't know yet.
The Lake Leland Lake Association is going to hire somebody with scuba diving and they're going to go along Lake Leland and pull it out by its roots.
And vacuum up.
Vacuum them up.
Of course they are.
Well, but I don't think that that sounds like an option here because if they've been cutting them, those roots have got to be, you're not going to pull those out. So I would explore the chemicals, if in fact you save chemicals to do it.
Otherwise, it seems like somewhere soon in the future, we've got to look at our own boat platform, our own hedge trimmer. Brian said that he was capable, had, had worked it up, taken the hedge trimmer and putting a cutter out the other side, so we're running twice its wide, with a custom-built thing, et cetera. It's still going to be a job that we're going to have to start taking responsibility for because this volunteer.
You're going to need chainsawers.
Yeah.
So it's all up in the air, but that's what I'm chasing right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more?
Nope, I'm done.
Can we vote it on that? We voted on that?
If we voted on both.
Always. Okay.
Moving on to Miles Kimmerly. Kyle, any updates?
No updates. Didn't have a, a meeting last time. I didn't meet with Klaus and his partner walk around, but that's about it.
Melinda just hand me the transaction summary for the logging. We finally got final payment on that, seventy-four fifty-seven thirty-nine. So it's not a whole lot of money for as much wood as they took out, but.
It was mostly.
But I think maybe a little bit more than many expect, yes.
Yeah, I think five thousand was kind of the idea, but.
Yeah.
Wasn't there another check though?
That's income?
That's the second.
That's income.
That's the second check?
That's all of it. There's several checks.
Oh, okay.
That's all of it.
Cumulonimbus.
I wish they would have done a little nicer job. That's kind of the problem with mechanical harvesting, they just, it'll all come, I mean, it'll look fine in a couple of years, but.
And then our park staff gets to cleaning it up.
Yeah, well, and that, I mean, I think if we have derrings come in and clean up what the mess is, we could easily burn up seventy-five hundred dollars.
More than that, yeah.
So it's a little bit disappointing. And Melinda, you missed the update. This is from the barn.
Yeah, I'm trying to just explain.
Okay.
Just move those two high spots into the fill area?
Yep, and then reseed.
Put a driveway in?
Not put a driveway, just being able to drive.
He said they might put some gravel here though, for like twenty feet.
Yeah, I see.
And Old Settlers, I didn't have anything, any updates.
Oh, I saw that email. I guess we already went through Old Settlers, but about the guy asking about mooring.
Yeah.
Okay. I would just say like in the future, because we responded like temporary.
It needs to be in our policy.
I would, just the language, if we wrote a policy, not call it temporary mooring, just say temporary anchoring.
Yeah.
Mooring counter, it's like this idea of something more permanent.
Right.
Just reading that, it would be my only.
You've got a lot of mooring down.
Yeah.
It's all over the place.
All my water skiles are full of mooring.
Maintenance goals, Scott's not here. Public comment, I'll be here.
I'm to back up. Did you tell them, be able to tell them what we did, where we are temporarily with the budget or Casey Dean?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Although maybe you ought to, ought to tell them too, we'll see if we both heard anything.
I am wracking my brain with all those numbers from Parks yesterday to remember what we did, but I think we put ten thousand, anyway, we pulled ten thousand back.
Oh, I didn't talk about that. We were talking about the halftime position or the quarter time position.
Oh, okay.
And the contract with D N W and releasing to end the, the scale.
All my notes are in my budget books, so we'll wait till next month to tell you where we're. Basically, everything that we asked for, but we're not going to get it upfront, they're going to hold back a little bit and if we end up needing it, we just have to come and request. I think that's where it was left, so.
Passed around quite a lot.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes. All set?
All set. Nothing for me, I'll motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Court. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned. Through to, do you want to sit down for a second?
No. I will, I will.